The city is doing and you with your reaching out with communication every day and Michael Lamar and his staff, just a great job. So I really appreciate all the work that everybody's doing.
Very good. Well, thanks for joining us via telephone today. We'll go ahead and move on and have an invocation by Associate Pastor Jason Phillips with Calvary Chapel of Prescott, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
First, we'd like to say thank you guys for all that you guys are doing, and it does not go unnoticed. The city is very thankful. Myself and our church were praying for you as individuals. I wanted to share a passage of scripture out of Proverbs 11. It says in verse 14, "Where there is no counsel, the people fall; but in abundance of counselors there is safety." And truly, we see a rise of that. So I'd like to pray for this council here, the meeting, and for each one of you guys as individuals. So let's pray. Lord, we thank you so much for all that you've provided. Lord, we thank you for this group. I would like to lift up each and every member in this council, and we thank you for them and their leadership, and all that you are doing and are going to do through this time and this season. And I pray that your wisdom would be on their hearts and their minds. But, Lord, we ask for your protection and safety upon them and their families, and for the rest of the city. We lift it up into your hands, Lord, and ask that you would lead us and guide us. For it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Let's please call roll.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
And Mayor Mangerelli.
I'm here for that. Okay, today we have a presentation on the 2020 census, and I'm not sure who's Billy. I don't know. Do you want to say a little something as we get started on the census presentation?
Actually, I think Bren has something prepared, and then I'll add on.
I actually have, sorry, holy cow, I have the information from Ms. Stotler, since she's not present. Can we maybe move her away from that? Yeah, thank you. The 2020 census continues, and as of today, none of the important dates for the census have changed. Census Day is April 1st, 2020. Census mailings began to land in residential mailboxes during the first two weeks in March. The Census Bureau will send a series of four to five mailings to every resident, so plan on receiving more than one mailing. Each will include duplicate information and outline the methods to respond, including accessing the online response page at 2020census.gov. Online response is simple and recommended. Navigate to 2020census.gov and follow the prompts to respond. Answer the six questions, click Submit, and you're done. Census outreach activities have slowed, some under the current COVID-19 circumstances, but it is more important than ever to complete your census response to ensure that vital federal funding reaches our community based on an accurate and current population count. The Census Bureau continues to seek employees via the 2020census.gov/jobs page. New hires are being made weekly to assist the Census Bureau teams to gain a full and complete count. Enumerators, who are Census Bureau employees designated to make in-person contact in those areas where it is difficult to gain a complete count, have been trained in the new public health protocols on social distancing and how to make those contacts in a safe manner due to COVID-19. As before, the best way to avoid a personal visit from an enumerator is to respond to your census questionnaire by phone, online, or regular mail as soon as you receive it. Some of our local centers, such as local public libraries, community colleges, which were slated to offer direct assistance to the public on census response, have had to modify hours, vacate scheduled census events, or close due to the public health concerns. If you need assistance responding to your census questionnaire or have other questions, please contact the Community Development Department at (928) 777-1317, or contact Census Bureau directly at (844) 330-2020. There is also a wealth of information that is easily accessible at 2020census.gov. Remember, census data is confidential by federal law, and the data of respondents may not be released or published by the Census Bureau for a period of 72 years. Together, we can achieve a complete count, counting every...
Very good. Thanks, Sarah, for that. You know, I was at home for lunch. It's really important that people remember to do the census. I know there's a lot of other things crowding out the message to do our census, but it's really, really important to do that. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any other comments in that regard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It is critically important because it's actually $3,000 for every person that is counted, and that's pretty important to the state of Arizona. We know that we've been undercounted for the last two censuses, and one of the largest undercounted groups are children that are five and under. And so, really critical that everybody take the time, as Bren, as was read by Sarah, three ways to do it. You can do it online, you can call in, or you can mail it in, but please get that done. I did mine. I got another reminder yesterday, and then I'll probably get another reminder tomorrow. And if you send it in, then you won't have anyone come knocking at your door. So, and I'd like to say, Mayor, that this is our constitutional duty. It's actually in the Constitution, and how smart our founding fathers were. So, our representation in DC is determined by the census. We very likely will get another congressional person due to the census, and we will also use these figures next year for our redistricting throughout the state. So, really critical. We passed out about 31 of these, and I gave Tyler one. I'm hoping he gets to put it on before April 1. Not Tyler, but his little boy. So, thank you, Mayor. Again, very important. I'm happy to answer any questions from anyone about the census at any time.
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a question. Hey, Billy. Like we said on the radio this morning, we, about two or three days after we got our census notification, we sent in on the Internet our census information, and yet we continue to get reminders. Kathy said to me, she goes, "Well, what's this all about? We already sent it in, and don't they have our information?" So are people going to get these reminders whether they have sent in their information on the Internet or not?
Yes, they will. I think those are predetermined, but they won't, will not get an enumerator at their door. So, I mean, if you send it in, they're not going to send one, someone to your door, but they will send reminders by mail, because the mail is behind getting all of that done.
Okay, thank you.
By that, I mean, yes, the online registration is a little far behind. The mail isn't already scheduled. Just a reminder, so ask everybody, "Have you done your census yet?" So, it literally takes five to eight minutes.
Yeah, very good. Any other questions or comments on the census?
[laughter]
Well, Billy, thanks for your work on this. Appreciate it, and we'll continue to get the word out. And while you're listening there, Billy, if you could mute while you're not talking, well, that'll be a little better for us on this end.
I will. And I'm trying to find my Facebook online, so, but you guys, I'll find that gradually. Let me try to mute you.
Well, don't mute me, mute yourself.
I know what you mean.
My wife, my wife tries to mute me, too, but, okay.
Well, it's good for you.
Let's move on to proclamations.
National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, due to the restrictions that we've imposed in the city, you'll recall the last couple of years, we had quite a few Vietnam War veterans in the chambers here to be acknowledged and recognized for the National Vietnam War Veterans Day and the proclamation that goes with it. So I will be speaking to those veterans and to the residents of the city through our video feed. And with that, we do have the past commander of the American Legion Post 6 with us today, Sherem Scott. Thank you for coming. I'm currently the judge advocate for the American Legion Post 6 and also the senior vice commander for the VFW Post 541, the Bucky O'Neill Post here in Prescott as well. So, I'll read the proclamation, which is National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Whereas by the, by an act of Congress, signed into law by President Trump on March 28, 2017, the first federal statute to specifically honor Vietnam veterans, created Vietnam, National Vietnam War Veterans Day to be observed on March 29 of each year. And whereas on March 29, 1973, the last American combat troops withdrew from South Vietnam after more than nine million men and women served in the US military services during the Vietnam War era. And whereas 58,724 men and women died serving during the Vietnam War, and whereas due to the divisive nature of the Vietnam War, few returning veterans were properly welcomed home and honored for their service and sacrifice to the founding ideals of our nation. And whereas the city of Prescott prides itself in valuing its many military veteran residents, and whereas it is only right and proper that the city of Prescott and its residents recognize and honor all of its Vietnam War veterans for their service and sacrifice, now therefore Greg El Mangerelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, on behalf of the Prescott City Council, does hereby encourage all veterans to display the flag of the United States and to honor Vietnam War veterans, and does hereby acknowledge March 29, 2020, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. So thank you, all of you veterans, and specifically, all of you Vietnam War veterans.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Good, and thank you, Sherem, for being here today to represent our Vietnam veterans, which we have a number of Vietnam veterans here in the city. And on behalf of the council, we were grateful for all of our veterans and our Vietnam veterans, and welcome home. Thank you for your service. Okay, we're going to move on to our regular agenda. Item 8A is a COVID-19 update, and I'm wondering if we need to have a sign language interpreter here to do that?
He has not yet arrived, so it's up to you if you'd like to proceed with that, or we can move on to the next agenda item and wait.
John, what would you advise?
If you don't mind waiting.
Okay. Sure. I think we're okay with that. We'll just move on to item B, please.
Okay. It'll be a legislative update. Do we have Tyler on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Tyler.
Awesome. I'm watching you guys remotely. It's kind of strange because it's delayed, but here we go. I've got, I sent you an update yesterday through email with, with a lot of information happening at the federal level as well as the state. I sent some attachments as well, which give a better summary. As you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to this, but the first one I'll talk about is House Resolution 6201. This is a federal one. It's the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. This was signed into law last week, and basically, it guarantees free coronavirus testing. It establishes paid leave and expands emergency paid sick leave and paid family leave, and enhances unemployment insurance, expands food security initiatives, and increases federal Medicaid funding. Those two documents I sent as attachments to this update have a lot more information, and they're quite extensive. So if you'd like to see more, I encourage you to look at those. They go into depth on a whole variety of subjects, but one thing to note is that under this bill, local governments would be required, or are required now, to provide paid sick leave due to COVID-19, but they're not eligible to use the tax credit to offset that. So we sent a letter. Mayor Mangerelli signed it yesterday. We received information from the League of Cities, and we sent it to our congressional delegation, asking for this to be corrected. There's a few other things that they're looking at. I'll talk about another bill in a couple of minutes that's being discussed, probably as we speak, that hopefully the National League of Cities is looking to include some other elements to correct, basically some oversights that happened in this legislation that was enacted. So I won't go through the lengthy summary I included here. Unless anybody has any questions, I'll move on to what the Small Business Administration is doing. And they, last week as well, they approved Arizona, so it's an economic injury disaster loan program, and Arizona was declared eligible for that. This allows small businesses here in Arizona experiencing the impact of COVID-19 to be eligible for up to $2 million of low-interest rate loans. Businesses can apply at sba.gov/disaster. And I'd like to note that our Chamber of Commerce here locally has done a great job of communicating this information. They, they're sending out emails, I see them probably daily, to the businesses. So I think there's a really concerted effort, a really good effort, to keep our businesses informed of all the resources that they have during this trying time for them. And then last, about the federal updates, I'd like to talk about the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or the CARE Act. This is the one that's currently being discussed. There's a couple of versions of it. One's in the Senate, one's in the House, and it does a few things. With respect to small businesses, it would establish and provide funding for forgivable bridge loans, which, as you know, kind of turns into grants. In the end, would most likely be the best case scenario there. And so, we'll see how that goes. There's a lot of other aspects to it. It talks about taxes. For example, with delayed due dates for employer payroll taxes. It talks about healthcare and all those elements that are included there. And it talks about education. For example, temporarily suspending payments for federal student loans, and a whole bunch of other things. I received some back and forth communication from our airport department. Dr. Sabata was looking to write our, especially Congressman Gosar, because the House version had some, some elements that were not included that may have impacted essential air service funding, as well as maybe some of the supplemental grant funding from the last cycle. So she wanted to update Congressman Gosar, ensure that those, those monies and those programs are safe despite all of the uncertainty that's going on around us. And that letter was signed by the mayor and sent off today that I saw, which is good. So now, I'll jump into state updates. There's quite a bit here as well. As you probably heard, the legislature passed what they're calling a skinny budget. It had bipartisan and unanimous support, and they adjourned until April 13, with the idea being that they're going to play it by ear. If the time comes around April 13, that they can come back into session, reconvene, and begin working on bills that were basically left stalled in their spots, whether that was in the Rules Committee or waiting to be heard on the floor. We are getting pretty close to the end run here of these sessions, so a lot of bills have almost made it to the finish line, but they've all been paused. And so basically, the skinny budget is the base budget released in January. It has some modifications. For example, the biggest one being $50 million to, as an emergency package to deal with COVID-19. But good news for us is that this budget includes the $1 million in hotshot PSPRS funding for the city of Prescott. So that was great, to see that in there, and we've been working to make sure that was. Let's see here. I'm not going to go through all the budget bills. If you can see in your summaries, I included, there were 12 budget bills, and this information mostly came from the League of Cities, the bullet points here. They, they just tried to include in each budget bill what items of relevance there were for cities. And so, I'll highlight a couple. On the first one, Senate Bill 2910, Public School Closures. I've highlighted there halfway down, if schools remain closed after March 29, which is looking very likely is the case, it would require that each public school offer students general education through alternative formats determined by that public school for the duration of the closure. It would also allow them to use money generated during this school year to provide summer school during the summer of 2020, and then it cancels statewide assessments for this school year as well. And then you can see there's other bill on unemployment compensation. General appropriations, that first bullet point indicates there's 2.5, over 2.5 million allocated to DES, Department of Economic Security, for coordinated homeless services. Jumping down to capital outlays, Senate Bill 1691, there is about 379 million allocated for the State Highway Fund for highway construction, 30 million for the State Aviation Fund, which is good news that helps local airports. And then more specifically, under Senate Bill 1690, with the $50 million contingency for the COVID-19 impact, that money is looking at housing assistance, homeless assistance, including shelter food, economic assistance for small businesses, and then monies for food banks. I'm assuming there's going to be more to it than that. I heard on the governor's call this morning that they are basically waiting for the federal government to enact this legislation that they're debating right now, to see where that money is going, and then the state can determine how can we best use the 50 million allocated so we don't duplicate services, and so where it can go to where it's most needed. With that, Mayor, I'm happy to wrap it up and answer any questions if there are some.
Yeah, before we do that, Michael, do you want to speak a little bit to the airport funding? I know you and I were looking at that earlier today.
Robin Sabata mentioned that there is a possibility, and it's at this point just a possibility, that one of the two versions, either the House version or the Senate version, might allow for the portion of local matches for terminal construction to be eligible for some federal reimbursement. The versions right now, it appears the House version might make it eligible, but the Senate version wouldn't. So what we did is, the mayor and I reached out to our legislative delegation, Senators Sinema, McSally, and Representative Gosar, to say, even if you're not for what the House version looks like, if there could be a caveat that allowed supplemental projects for 19 to be included in some funding in this $2 trillion, which is a number that's hard, I think, for any of us to get our arms around, we greatly appreciate it, because that would be money more in the city's pocket, and knowing that going into next year, we don't know what the economic conditions are going to be here locally, us not having to come up with some portion of the $3 million, $3 million, three and a half, we promise would be nice for the community. So, I also saw, Mayor, that you probably might want to consider participating. Senator Sinema's having a town hall with mayors tomorrow, so you could pitch this directly to her as well tomorrow.
Good.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention, back to the comments about small business development loans, I think all of you expressed to me in one way or another, and I totally agree, that the small businessman or woman is who we really need to be concentrating our efforts on. So we are going to train up at least one city employee to be an expert on the small business development program, Jessica Walther, who's in the Finance Department. And we will allow Jessica to meet one-on-one with interested small business owners as this program rolls out, after she educates herself. So, don't show up tomorrow, anybody. But, so we have somebody in City Hall who is taking on the task of helping our small business owners work through the red tape of a program like this. So I thought that was an initiative that we should at least acknowledge.
Yeah, no, that's good. The SBA did approve that funding, right, and it's in the form of a loan of some sort with a great interest rate, I assume.
Yeah, it's a really low interest rate, and Councilman Blair and I even talked about it. It's a 30-year payback, so, and the interest rates are extremely low. So as we better understand this program, it'll be good for us to be able to facilitate working our small business people through it.
Yeah, and on this topic, what have you done in terms of the city? Are you asking folks to contact us if they're having difficulty with their utility bills or whatever, on a case-by-case?
Yeah, on a case-by-case basis, obviously, there's a lot of folks that, even small business owners that are paycheck to paycheck, that if they are experiencing problems keeping the doors open because of, obviously, the doors being closed, I'm specifically talking about restaurant and bars, I guess, more than anything else, contact us, and we will look on a case-by-case basis at what we can do to delay a utility payment, work individually. I didn't want to do a blanket edict, because I think when you do something like that, you have all comers, but we definitely want our residents and business owners to know that if you are struggling and you need to come forward, come forward. Call our Finance Department, and we'll see what we can do to help.
Yeah, and I know Sherry Heinie's got some resources at the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. You can go to prescott.org and get some more information there. She's been working really hard to help small businesses. Councilman Blair?
Yeah, past Senator Steve Pierce sent me a link, just so folks know, and I'm sure the city's on top of it, but for business financial support, you can go to arizonocommerce.com, which will take you to the Clearinghouse, which is the best resource to follow all their different, you know, bullet points and what you can do to get these loans.
ArizonaCommerce.com. Well, it's an interesting legislative session, to say the least, because they were right in the middle of budget negotiations when, you know, COVID-19 hit, and they did get apparently the skinny budget passed, so to speak. Tyler, you said they're coming back April what?
April 13 is the goal.
April 13. That's at least tentative for now. Okay. Questions, comments from the council?
Mayor, did you, you know, did you want to talk a little bit about, it was very brief in that call, but I thought it was very telling, is the Arizona enrichment concept that they're talking about. It's the childcare provision?
Oh, right. So, I've been on so many calls, I apologize. This morning, we were on a call with the governor's office, and they're concerned about particularly EMS workers, police, fire, healthcare workers. And school is out, as we all know, and so there's a gap for childcare. And so, they're, my understanding was they're going to use schools. In many cases, they're trying to open up this enrichment program, which is a childcare. They understand the hardship with, you know, now you're gathering groups of people together again, but they have protocols in place for safety and health to help with this gap of childcare for our EMS, healthcare workers, police, fire. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, it is. I just thought it was very telling. The, and I, you don't always want to read the tea leaves, but to me, if the governor's looking at doing something that statewide, I think we should all hunker down for the long haul, because you would not be instituting a statewide childcare program for first responders if this was going to go away tomorrow.
Yeah, in terms of school opening back up again. Yeah, yeah. Well, they seem to be taking two-week increments on this. I would imagine, when I talked to Tim Carter yesterday, he thought they would have an announcement maybe next week. It's really hard to say. This is all very tentative for us, in many cases, particularly with schools reopening. Any questions, comments for Tyler on the legislative update at this point? It's good to hear that the money for the hot shots is in there, Tyler. That was one of my questions, but you did cover that, so that's good to hear. All right. If not, we will move on to item C.
Approval of minutes for the March 10, 2020 special meeting and executive session and the March 10, 2020 voting meeting.
Okay. Looking for any discussion and a motion on the minutes?
Mayor, I move to approve city council minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second, and we'll let the clerk call the vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr?
Yes.
Mayor Mangerelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. We're going to back up now to item A on the agenda, because we have our ASL person here with us. And so, we waited for you to do, you know, you're fine. We waited to do our COVID-19 update. And Sarah, where would you like our interpreter, what's the best?
Right over here.
Okay.
And we will have a picture-in-picture.
Okay.
For the live audience.
What do you, right, right there is okay? Okay. So this is, I'm sorry, this is item, where did I go here? 8A, Discussion Regarding Updates Pertaining to COVID-19. And I can lead out on this a little bit, and then we can ask questions or have other comments from council. Obviously, this has been something that's kind of overwhelmed us a little bit here at the city in the last week or two, and thought it would be good to get some information out to the public regarding at least our and thought it would be good to get some information out to the public regarding at least our city services, what's open, what's not, and, and some of the things that we've been doing here in regard to COVID-19. So let me run through some of this. This is on the website, but city boards and commissions have ceased from meeting just because of the, uh, CDC guideline regarding 10 people being together in a meeting. Although we felt like it was important to have this meeting to continue forward with, uh, city business. Uh, but we have scaled back what's on the agenda at this point just because of the limited ability to hear from the public. Uh, police, everything is moving forward as normal. The police lobby is closed. Uh, phone and online reporting is offered as an alternative for reporting crimes. Uh, fire, uh, all stations are closed to the public. There are increased sanitation of sanitization of trucks and surfaces. And, uh, the Prescott Regional Communication Center has initiated calls or initiated actions on all 911 calls to provide added questioning of callers as it relates to the current COVID-19 pandemic, as suggested by the CDC. Uh, Public Works offices are closed to visitors, but you can call 777-1130 for questions and information, but all essential services staff are operating as scheduled. And let me just say that in terms of essential services, it's important to us that we keep moving forward as much as we can with all essential services. So your trash is being picked up, wastewater is being taken care of. You still have water, uh, moving through the system, of course. But with utility billing that's happening, uh, community development is working as normal to keep moving those permits through. We don't want to be a bottleneck here at the city in terms of construction and those building permits. Uh, so while some of the services are limited here as I go through this, uh, we want to keep the economy moving as much as we can during this difficult time. Prescott Library is doing a curbside pickup, uh, and that's happening Tuesday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Uh, Recreation Services, uh, this is important. When this first came out, we decided to suspend all of our parking fees and the fees at our trailheads for parking, so we're encouraging people to get outside. Uh, so that has happened. As soon as this took place, we implemented that. Uh, there is a change here recently, though. We have closed playgrounds just because of the nature of all the surfaces that folks are touching on those playgrounds. And public restrooms are closed at this time. And we do have Joe Baines here, uh, with us. Uh, Joe, do you want to address the restrooms just a little bit? I know there's some folks that are concerned about those being closed and it might be helpful to have some more information about why you chose to close the public restrooms.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Of course, all of these decisions at this time are, are very difficult decisions. We didn't think we would have to make. But first and foremost, the, the, the safety and protection of our citizens and our visitors and our employees are really, really important. And as you pointed out, Mayor, uh, with the playgrounds, they are, uh, an area where, uh, they get a lot of contamination can occur and they're hard to get off the surfaces. Uh, restrooms, of course, too, are really high on that list. And, and really, first and foremost was the health and safety of, of our employees, citizens and visitors. Um, second, really having a hard time keeping up with the, the cleaning supplies that we need to have, uh, with the ramped-up cleaning schedule that we had had. We're anywhere from two to six weeks out on getting materials, depending upon what those are. Hand sanitizer being one of the highest priorities. So really, to be able to keep up the kind of pace we would need to keep up to keep the rooms clean as they, as we would like them to be, uh, we would fall behind pretty quickly with, uh, cleaning supplies. This is, uh, in step with our neighbors, Prescott Valley, as well as Prescott National Forest. Uh, we are messaging people to come prepared. So, uh, if you're going to go out, you know, make sure that you take care of business before you go out. These are trying times and things will have to change a little bit and behaviors will have to change. But what we don't want to do is be a part of the problem. We want to be a part of the solution. So that's kind of it in a nutshell unless anybody has any other questions.
Any questions for Joe?
I just wanted to piggyback, you're nicer than I am.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the main reason we're doing this is that people won't act like adults. We have people, uh, ripping down our hand soap dispensers, stealing our toilet paper, living feces on the walls. Uh, it's relatively disgusting that you try to treat people like adults, especially during an emergency situation. And, uh, we're not having compliance from the community. So I appreciate what Joe's saying, but I, I'm, I'm a little bit more, more angry that we had to make this decision, but we don't have a choice if that's the case.
Yeah, fair enough. Uh, any other questions, comments from the council? Well, what I've been doing, Joe, is just encouraging people, you know, to, to get outside. I think it's very healthy, uh, particularly when the weather's great to be outside. There's been a lot of people I know you've seen in the parks and on the trails, and I think that's fabulous. I, I have cautioned folks, though, that we need to make sure there's social distancing when you're out there. Uh, I know people love to kind of congregate, but it's important that they know at the dog park and other places to make sure that, uh, we have social distancing. So I've been trying to get that message out as well. But thanks for, uh, opening the parks up and it's nice to have those fees waived.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and we also have put some signage up.
Mayor, I, I do have a, there.
Yeah, go ahead, Billy.
Yes, so, uh, Michael, you and I were talking. Aren't you considering doing porta-potties?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, we did drop off porta-potties at all of the locations where we had bricks and mortar restrooms. But remember, those will be kind of for emergency-only kind of a thing. We're at the mercy of the cleaning service that the, the PortaJohn people will provide. But we thought at least there's an option there if there's an emergency. So we're, we're doing the best we can in a difficult time. And we did also, to your point, Mayor, put out some signage. And, and really, it's up to people to practice social distancing. If they're showing symptoms, don't, don't be out. Uh, uh, you know, sanitize your hands, things like that, things that the CDC has been pretty strong on. So if people will do that, we'll get through this.
Yep, very good. Thank you, Joe. Did that answer your question, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, it, yes, it did, and I, I felt that, that's a great way to mitigate this issue.
Very good. Well, let me, uh, wrap up here. Uh, Community Development, uh, I mentioned a little bit already, but they've transitioned to an electronic system for permitting, plan review, fire prevention services, and planning and zoning. Uh, City Clerk Notary Services provided by city staff will be suspended until further notice. The airport still has commercial flights that are continuing through United Express, operated by SkyWest through essential air service contract. Uh, I think that rounds out most services. I think it's important to let the public know that City Hall is still open, that while we've transitioned many of our services to an online format, which is important so people can stay home and keep social distance, uh, we have not closed City Hall at this point and, and we're taking that kind of day by day, uh, but at this point, we're still open. The other thing I've been stressing out there, and I'm sure the rest of the council has as well, to continue to support our small businesses by buying gift cards, by doing curbside takeout, pick up from our restaurants. Uh, you can still purchase alcohol from the bars, uh, on a delivery basis with sealed containers. So it's important to remember these small businesses and get the word out that we carry them through this very difficult time. Anything else to add or questions from the council?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a comment. A friend of mine, Bill Beard, I'm going to give a shout out to him. Uh, he's a candidate for Pima County Supervisor. Uh, of course, Pima County has experienced, uh, substantially more impact of the coronavirus than we have. But, um, he is recommending something that I think maybe the council and the city might want to consider. Um, and I'll read part of, uh, what he, uh, sent out to me. "Business owners especially require certainty in order to provide not just product or services, but to plan operations and how many employees to schedule and when. In an effort to allow for businesses to operate effectively during the current state of emergency, not only in Pima County, but of course, we have it here in Yavapai County as well, um, he's calling for an immediate suspension and relaxation of existing sign codes and related rules governing the advertising of businesses. The businesses that have decided to remain open by offering only takeout or drive-through service must have the ability to advertise so that they can remain in business and let the public know that they are continuing to offer those services and products. The existing restrictions under various codes should be immediately removed or greatly reduced to allow these businesses to weather the storm. Allowing these businesses to advertise for the remainder of this current crisis with banners or street signage that would let the public know they're still operating and suggest that these rules remain suspended until such time as the current crisis is declared over and to extend for a period of at least 90 days afterward so that business in general can recover." So leadership requires them to also provide as much certainty as possible in these uncertain times. And waiving fees and such regulations would go a long way to providing that certainty. So I think that's something that we as a council, uh, should, uh, consider because our sign code does restrict certain types of signage, uh, throughout the city. And I know myself, just trying to find some of my favorite restaurants to find out if they are still offering some of that takeout service. I know we've got some temporary signs down in the, um, General Plaza area noting that, um, they are offering, uh, delivery to the cars at curbside. So I think it's something that makes a lot of sense. Um, and would really help our small businesses get through this crisis.
Thank you, Councilman Good. That's a great suggestion and something we could look at on a future council agenda. And you're right in pointing out that, uh, Public Works has done a great job uh, dispersing curbside parking signs, uh, particularly around the plaza. Maybe there's other places that they've done this, but, uh, that does help, uh, the public know uh, that those folks are doing curbside or takeout. Uh, Councilwoman Scholl?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I know earlier we had mentioned utility billing with the city of Prescott, but, um, APS is also offering, um, kind of a relief program right now. If you are having trouble paying your electric bill, um, you can visit aps.com backslash support or call 800-253-9405. Um, they will not be shutting off power for non-payment right now and they are waiving late fees. So if you need help with your electricity bill, make sure to reach out. They're offering relief as well.
Very good. Thank you for that. Anything else from the council, Michael?
Mayor, if there's general consensus to explore what Councilman Good has brought forward in the interest of time, we could bring something to the next meeting. So I don't know if you guys want to?
I think also what you and I had talked about, and I think other folks have on their mind, is based upon how this council normally functions with filters such as planning and zoning and the Board of Adjustments and different groups, we may be asked in the future to make determinations and judgments on different processes that take that filter out to keep our economy moving, let alone not to sit back and say, we'll wait until everything's back in place and then our construction world and everything else goes stagnant. So I think we need to look at that at the next agenda as well to talk about how in an emergency time, this council's going to take on more responsibility than it has right now.
Those are good suggestions and I think the next agenda should be, uh, considerate of any of these ideas to help small businesses and to help the economy keep moving forward. Councilman Blair, you make a good point. We've talked about, uh, whether we want to try to convene planning and zoning in this kind of format or do we bring those projects right to the council? Those are things that we need to consider. We kind of wanted to get through this process today to kind of see how this worked. And, and, uh, but I think it's something that we really need to consider, uh, for the next, uh, council agenda.
I think the public in general is out there saying, we voted for you. In times like this, this is when the rubber hits the road and we have to make the hard decision and be that filter, let alone leaving it up to planning and zoning or somebody else to do it. So it's time to take the bull by the horns.
Yep, understood. Uh, Councilmember Rusing?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to just make the, uh, comment that this is a marathon and it's not a sprint. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, the last thing I'll mention, just from the county level, we've been working very closely with the county on this issue. And one of the things that's being worked on this week is an incident, uh, management command post out of their EOC. So they have their, uh, Emergency Operations Center set up right now on Commerce Drive. I haven't been out there just yet, but, uh, there is a multi-agency coordination group that's been put together that's county-wide. Um, I do sit on that group and that group is a decision-making group that is helping to determine the policy and the priorities of the incident command post. So I think in terms of a fire, wildfires, many times you'll see an incident command post set up to manage that fire. In this case, we have a pandemic and so, uh, the county is setting up that incident management, uh, group with the MAC as kind of the decision-making arm of that. And, uh, that, that's going to be very helpful in terms of information and resource allocation for our county. So I'm grateful for the county's leadership and Craig Brown as the chairman to get that moving forward. All right, I don't think there's anything else. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have anything on COVID-19?
No, I did not. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Then seeing nothing else on that, agenda item, we'll move. I got to look here closely. Item D, please.
Approval of acceptance of a donation from the Harold James Foundation for the purchase of a CBE 40 Pro Hybrid screen and projection equipment for free family movie nights at Ken Lynn Lee Park in the amount of $28,846.25 plus applicable taxes.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director. Uh, it's kind of nice to bring something positive to you, uh, in this time. Uh, and this is positive. This is something we've talked about for a few years and have never been able to put the pieces together. Uh, what this would be, would be a free family movie night, uh, that would start, social conditions allowing, uh, would start, uh, May 29th and end on August 6th. So it'd be every Friday through the summer, typical summer break season for the, uh, high school students and school students. Uh, really family-friendly and free. Uh, in addition to the movie, it would also include food trucks, uh, bounce houses, a kid's zone. Uh, the event would be run by Hero Party Rentals, Ryan Glass. Uh, Ryan was instrumental in helping put this together, uh, and reach out to the Dame, James Foundation to see if they, that was something they'd be interested in. So Ryan was a big part of this. Uh, the Harold James Family Trust, uh, has graciously offered, uh, to fund the purchase of the screen and the projection equipment, as well as the first year of operational costs. Uh, the funding for operational costs in the future years would be paid for through other sponsorships that we would get in the community, other businesses that would be interested in it. Uh, the Harold James Family Trust, as most of you know, has had a, an extensive history of supporting quality of life in, in the city of Prescott in a number of different ways. Uh, some that come to mind are the remodel of the Elks Theater when the city owned it, uh, the bronze statues that we have out in front of the Fippen right now, and then a couple of future ones that are coming up. Uh, also a lot of land donations and Kayla's Hands Playground. Uh, they were a big part of that. In fact, they're also a big part of the shade structure that's currently being constructed over the top of Kayla's Hands. So again, they've been a, a great, uh, partner in the community. Uh, we're really excited about this and, uh, with that, I'd answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Questions, comments from the council? Well, it's a great project, Joe, and I appreciate, uh, the James family for what they do throughout our community. And I think on behalf of the council, we're grateful. And please send our thanks, uh, to, uh, Ron James and his family for, uh, this donation. Entertainer motion?
Mayor, I move to approve donation and make purchases.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Clerk will take the vote.
Councilman Blair?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr? Mayor Pro Tem Orr? And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item E, please.
Approval of city contract number 2020-173 with Central Square Technologies in an amount not to exceed $125,727.70 for Tri-Tech Inform RMS software implementation.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, Nate Keegan, IT Director for the city of Prescott. Uh, this item is really just a bit of housekeeping with the Central Square CAD mobile software and records management software for PRCC. Um, like any kind of partnership which we look for with our software vendors or even internally sometimes with the city, we're family and like all families, we don't always get along. So what you see in front of you is Central Square had some challenges. We sat on some payments to get them to address those and take proper attention to those items and get them fixed. They did. So we're at the point where we're good to send them the money. We owe them the money. It's a budgeted item and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Nate. Questions, comments from the council?
Uh, Nate, I noticed that the, um, uh, total amount is going to be split between, uh, Prescott Police Department, Prescott Valley Police Department, and Yavapai College. Can you, uh, estimate the, uh, actual dollar amounts for each agency?
If my math is right, it's about 40% split for Prescott and Prescott Valley, which would be around 60, low $60,000 per. Then you have a by college, it'd be around $10,000 to $15,000 for that. I would expect the total dollar amount
Other questions, comments? And clerk, you'll let me know if you have anything from the public on these, I assume.
I will. I've not received any public comment.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-173.
Second.
We have a motion and second. We'll take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Hey, Mayor Protem, are you muted between these votes?
I am.
Okay. There's a noise coming across here for some reason.
Yeah, no, I am muted. In fact, the reason my last vote was slow, I couldn't find the unmute button.
No worries. No worries.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to item F, please.
Adoption of resolution 2020-1738 approving city contract number 2020-171 for development agreement with Chamberlain Development for realignment and widening of Willow Creek Road.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Craig Dotson, Public Works. So this item we have before us today is a proposed development agreement between the City of Prescott and Chamberlain Development for the construction of Willow Creek Road widening and curve realignment projects. So areas that we're dealing with then here on this exhibit, so in the area of the red alignment, that is the Willow Creek Road widening section that is associated with the developments that are happening in the area with antelope crossings as well as Westwood. So with the addition of those developments, then that has triggered the requirement for the widening of Willow Creek Road to be able to account for and handle the traffic. That widening will include a traffic signal intersection at Warrior Way and also at Lone Then the Willow Creek curve realignment is this segment. So this is the Deepwell Ranch Roundabout on State Route 89. And on the outside of this exhibit is where the existing curve is. This is a depiction of our new design for the curve, which will be a much longer radius as well as four-lane divided with a raised center median between the four lanes in that area. So this project, our curve project specifically, is about safety. Safety was brought up and discussed in the first meeting on September 10th of 2019 in association with the antelope crossing Phase 5 plat review, and concern raised in regards to safety with that existing roadway segment. So there was concerns in regards to the additional traffic accessing Willow Creek Road and a connection close to the curve. So those connections will be right here, and the connection on the east side of the road here is associated directly with antelope crossings, Phase 5 area. Those two intersections, when this project is complete, will be restricted to right-in, right-out only movements, and will have that raised center median between those intersections. So after we had the discussions associated with the concerns of the curve and the plat review, Public Works initiated design of the curve realignment. Chamberlain Development initiated and designed the Willow Creek Road widening section and also expressed the want and/or the offer to partner with the city on the curve project. So that initiated our discussions on how to accomplish that. Ultimately, a DA is the cleanest and best way to accomplish a partnering aspect like that. So then Public Works drafted the DA initially and has been reviewed through the legal department as well as the Chamberlain Development Group for the combined projects. So the DA would have the developer lead the construction efforts, and the city will reimburse for its portion. Some of the specific items that we have in the DA, along those lines is the owner. So the owner is Chamberlain Development. The owner shall at owner's sole expense demolish the existing roadway and provide mass earthwork. The owner shall complete demolition, which shall include removal of this existing asphalt and 30,000 cubic yards of export material as identified on the design documents. The owner shall install water and sewer as shown on the improvement plans, sheet C09. The owner shall dedicate additional right-of-way to the city as part of the antelope hills' Phase 5 final plat for the Willow Creek Road curve improvements, as shown on exhibit E. Then on our side, the city shall reimburse the owner for construction of all new improvements up to and including storm drain installation, subgrade preparation, curb and gutter, sidewalk installation, paving and other pertances for the roadway section as shown on the final improvement plans. The city shall reimburse owner for any export that exceeds 30,000 cubic yards. We anticipate we will have an additional 38,000 cubic yards beyond the 30,000 that Chamberlain will manage. The city shall review and approve costs of construction for the final improvements prior to the owner beginning construction. The city shall abandon rights of ways no longer needed for the improvements to the owner. So that's the kind of the main focus of the DA and the requirements there. Ultimately benefits to the city associated with that, removal of the asphalt by the developer, then that's an expense that the city will not have to forego, removal of the 30,000 cubic yards of dirt, and then combining the project is significantly less impact to the public. If we can have one project, one contractor manage to construct it at one time instead of having a longer impact timeframe with that. The portion that is included with the developer has a benefit towards the city in the realm of $400,000 to the city. Ultimately, what triggered these discussions and going forward this way was the concern in regards to going forward with the antelope Phase 5 plat. And at that meeting on September 10th, the decision was that we wanted to wait to go forward with that approval until we had the curve addressed. At this point, I believe we have the curve addressed with design, with the DA, if we go forward with it today, set that in place. The DA does include a performance to get the construction underway within 60 days to get that going. With, so I'm here today to recommend us consider going forward with this DA, as well as the next item will be that review of that plat also. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Craig. Councilman Blair?
I do have a question. You know, often I get perturbed at traffic management, and knowing that we're putting a raised curb there for ingress egress out of a residential neighborhood, to me, doesn't seem like it's public safety-wise. I wonder if we've looked at, with the light that's going to be on Lone Elk, if we could put a light here and have them timed together, that that would be safer. When you get people that are making a right-hand turn out of that exit, you're going to kick them down into the roundabout, and ultimately, they don't want to go that direction. They want to go north to Prescott. They're going to be loading up that roundabout to go around that circle and back down Willow Creek Road. Same holds true when they're trying to make a right-hand turn, and that's the only way you can go, north to Prescott, and they don't want to go north, they want to go south. So now they're going to go down to the stoplight, do a U-turn, and gum up that intersection. So did we look at putting in another stoplight and timing those two together for traffic management instead of curb and right-in, right-out?
That was looked at, and specifically, the primary thing is those intersections are too close to that curve to be able to allow left-out movements or left-in movements and/or have another signal that's too close to the curve, and/or the signals would be too close together. In regards to those movements, if they, if an individual from this area of the subdivision does not want to go north, then it's as easy as them coming down through the subdivision to the signalized intersection in order to have that left movement, protected movement out of that area, as well as the other side, the subdivision, they would be able to come down to the signal on that side.
I'm glad you're bringing that up because in being out there, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that that's an option, and that's why you're doing what you're doing, and that's why you looked at it, is that there is a protected stoplight.
Yes.
Where they can, on both sides, get to that light instead of going to the roundabout and gumming it up or gumming up a U-turn at the other light. So thank you.
I like that official terminology, "gumming up." Councilman Good?
Yeah, I was one of the members of the council that was concerned about the severity of that curve angle. And of course, we knew we had a turned-over semi that either wasn't paying attention or was taking that curve a little too fast and ended up turning over. So I think reducing the severity of that's going to be significantly more safe, and taking out the bulk of that mound that restricts sightlines will certainly make it more safe for vehicles that are making that right out of that Phase 5, be able to have a better understanding of what the volume of traffic is, as long, in addition to the ones that are coming out of Westwood. So that should be a big improvement. Now, I know you're going to have a raised center divider, and at that point, there is still one lane on each side, correct?
No, it will be two lanes on both sides. So it will come out of the roundabout and continue with two lanes. So when these projects are done, two lanes will come from the roundabout, around the curve, and all the way down almost to James Lane. It will be a four-lane or five-lane configuration, so there will be like left turns in the center and four travel lanes.
How much traffic volume is this design expected to be able to handle? Vehicles per day?
This is designed for build-out by the traffic impact analysis.
Vehicles per day?
I do not have that number on the tip of my tongue.
With that outside curve section, that still will be an easement for the city, correct?
There will be a right-of-way that will be cleaned up.
Not easement, but right-of-way.
In this area, this is where the existing right-of-way is, and as we finish the project and then know exactly what's needed to maintain the roadway, then we will do a right-of-way reduction around there because we don't need and/or want a bunch of additional right-of-way there to have to maintain.
I'm just concerned about growth in that area with the Deepwell Ranch full build-out, and I know it's going to take quite a few years, if not decades, but it certainly will expand the volume of traffic coming through that area and being able to maintain some expansibility, so to speak, if we start to see some real challenges in the amount of traffic that that curve can handle. Is that being considered at all?
We do not have any plans, master plans documentation, that tell us that more than this road configuration will be required in there.
Well, it certainly will expand the amount of volume that we currently have because we only have one lane going through there on each side.
Correct.
I think if I'm not mistaken, though, that's designed for maximum build-out for the population of the master plan.
Correct.
And the rest of that land is to remain ranching, and that's why it won't need to be any bigger than it is at this build-out.
Correct. I have seen documentation identifying State Route 89 to have an additional lane someday.
Yeah, so if we do get too much traffic on there, then they would just go directly southbound through the primary 89 corridor in front of the airport.
That, and there will also be additional major collectors or arterial roads to the west of this, out in the ranch land, you know, way out here. There will be another loop, and that will come from State Route 89 and all the way around.
Find a park.
Yes.
I have no other objections other than a small amendment that I would suggest we make to the development agreement. Can I bring that up now? Under Background, Section 3E, where it references the many benefits of this development agreement, including investment, commitment to comprehensive planning, et cetera, et cetera, it also suggests that a benefit will be creating limited quality housing and other uses for citizens of the city. Now, to me, limited quality is not necessarily a benefit, and I've asked a number of our staff, including Matt, yourself, what does that mean? And I keep hearing, "Well, that's standard boilerplate." But I would suggest we either delete "limited" and just state that there will be creating quality housing and other uses for the citizens.
Right. We've had that discussion. My guess is like most lawyers, we find a document we like and we go with it. And my, I think we took this one from the James Deepwell Ranch, which was particularly a housing development agreement. Now, what does create limited quality housing necessarily? I mean, I don't know. I think it was a limited meaning, a certain number of housing that are quality in nature. However, the whole sentence is generally superfluous for a development agreement that really is looking to create a roadway. So it's not necessary. So if you want to take it out entirely, that, I think that's fine. If you want to remove the word "limited," that's fine as well.
I think we just delete that phrase right there, right? Wouldn't that be the easiest way to go?
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
Well, then I would move that we amend the Willow Creek Road Development Agreement, paragraph, well, Section 3 under Background, subsection E, and then subsection VI, and delete "create limited quality housing and other uses for the citizens of the city."
Very good. So you made that a motion at this point, right? Or you just said it's an amendment?
Sure. One of the ways you can do it is approve the resolution adopting the development agreement with this specific language, Councilman Good.
Yep.
Placed on the record.
Yep. Uh, yes, we will speak into the mic. Thank you.
Bailey, I don't know if you have the document in front of you, but what we're looking at is Paragraph 3, E, small Roman numeral 6 as being superfluous. It says, "Create limited quality housing and other uses for citizens of the city," and we're looking to remove that, and it has no objection from Public Works, the legal department, or the council, and it seems to make good sense.
Thank you for that, Councilman Good.
Excuse me?
Let's go to Councilmember Rusing.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question. How many rooftops, residential rooftops, will this project have at build-out? It looks like several thousand?
I was going to say specifically to this item. That's in the next item that George is going to be covering. We could. And he's... is going to be covering, we could, and he has those numbers associated with the plat on the next item. Is that okay if we hit it then?
So, this is just in relationship to the road realignment, this agenda item, but the next agenda item does speak to the plat, and then we can talk more about the...
I was just wondering how many houses this road was, how many people this road was servicing?
Again, I don't have that number specifically.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments in regard to this agenda item? All right, then we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, recommend move to adopt, I think this is Resolution Number 2020-1738 as amended.
Okay, we have a motion for Resolution Number 2020-1738 with the amendment from Councilman Good, and we have a second.
Yes.
So, we'll take a vote.
Matt, I just want to confirm, we don't need, do we need to clarify that the DA is being amended and not the resolution itself?
Yeah, so the, I'm looking at the recommended motion is adopt Resolution 2020-1738 with, hold on.
You want me to read you what I have?
Yeah, thanks.
Recommended action to adopt Resolution Number 2020-173A with revised language, removing Section 3, Subsection E, Subsection VI from the development agreement.
Beautiful.
That works.
All right.
That's a good motion and a second, so we can take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, very good. Let's move on to Item G, please.
Approval of final plat, FNP 20-003 for Phase 5 of Antelope Crossings, a 255-lot, single-family planned area development.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a repeat item that you have reviewed previously. I think it's come up a couple of times in your discussion regarding the development agreement and the curve. This was reviewed and a recommendation was made to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the final plat, subject to addressing the concerns about safety on the curve. I believe the actions you took back in September clearly indicated that your intent was to get that aligned before we brought the plat to you. With that action just taken by council, I believe we're ready to move forward with the plat. This particular section of the plat is the last platted piece of the Antelope Crossings development. It's Phase 5 of 5. This will create 58 lots. As we talked previously with some amendments made, this area was originally intended to incorporate some commercial, but that was prior to the adoption and inclusion of this area in the Deepwell Ranch master plan. So, with the master plan development, it allows far more flexibility, including shifting of commercial development elsewhere, which they have done, and this will allow you to move forward, again, 58 residential lots, connection via Amethyst Drive onto Willow Creek Road just south of the curve, and based on some conversations we've had internally between us and our Public Works Department, it appears that by the time infrastructure is completed here and home construction is underway, the construction of the corrections, the fix to the curve will be significantly far along or completed prior to any of these houses being completed and CBOs being issued. The safety of the residents of this phase would be accomplished through completion of that curve work. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, George. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Did you hear my previous question, the Public Works, what the residential rooftops are going to be at build-out for this?
Totally within the Antelope Crossing section, that's the five phases that this is Phase 5 of, you're looking at 255 lots. Westwood across the street has just under 200, it's 180-some-odd lots, but overall, within the master plan, the maximum number could go significantly higher than that, depending upon future development. Without having subdivision plats, it's hard to tell how far that will go. The maximum number allowed under the master plan could be in the range of 8,000 total lots. It's unlikely that we would get to that number based on planning practice, simply because we have situations like this where a great deal of open space is required as part of the development.
Well, one of my main concerns was the fact that we rezoned commercial to residential, and then I guess we moved it to another part of the planned community, and I just wanted to make the comment, I hope we have plans for services for those thousands of people out there, such as grocery stores, gas stations, and shopping. Do you feel that there's been adequate planning for those out there? Because I see that we've kind of jiggled around light industrial business, regional, and it's now residential only, so I just wanted to find out if we do have some plans for something other than residential. I see we have a faith-based school out there so far, but anything else planned?
The master plan that covers the, excuse me, I'm not talking into the microphone, the master plan that covers the entire area has a great deal of flexibility in its design. It allows for shifting of commercial from one place to another, depending on proximity to adequately designed intersections. Commercial wants to be at traffic signals, that's where you want it. It doesn't want to be at roundabouts. One of the things that we saw here was the piece that's been changed to allow this additional phase was an area that would have had very limited access, so not conducive to commercial. There are a number of other intersections south, further south than the drawing I have up here, that will allow for high volumes of traffic at signalized intersections that are perfect for commercial development. We anticipate that they would occur in those areas further south, closer to major traffic routes and major intersections. The master plan has more than adequate ability to accommodate the commercial needed for the residential development.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment, sir?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve FP 20-003.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, very good. Let's move on to Item H, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2020-165 to Fan Contracting for the Corsair Avenue Extension Project in the amount of $3,087,738. Approval of City Contract Number 2019-118A3, an amendment to City Contract Number 2019-118, with Lion Engineering and Surveying for Post-Design Services in the amount of $178,482, and Approval of Night Work.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My next item. So, this item is to award a contract for the construction of Corsair Avenue Extension, post-design services with Lions Engineering, as well as night work. So, this construction project, as I've got up here on exhibit, will create a new connection within the airport area between the existing Wilkinson Drive around a very good radius curve over to Corsair Avenue. So, this will create a definite secondary connectivity into the main heart of the airport industrial area, that is, on the upper reaches of Corsair Avenue here. Not only does it create that connectivity in order to promote commercial industrial development in that area, it also will relieve the traffic that the uses on Wilkinson Drive to allow us to perform pavement replacement and/or, you know, major repairs in there. Our existing pavement is very poor condition, so this will have that secondary benefit to us to be able to perform work up in that area as well and not have as big an impact on the users in the area. The project generally consists of constructing roadway connection, as I just showed there, and the extension creates that, those benefits for the circulation and access. So, the project will have paved travel lanes, it will be a two-lane, travel lane configuration with a center turn lane to allow for access to the properties going through the curve. There's already two new businesses out there that are expanding, so there is a dirt project just on the north, as well as a hay contractor. So, this is instantly going to create access and availability to those parcels in there. So, we'll have paved roads, curb and gutter, drainage, and utility improvements. On the utility side, the water distribution connection that will follow the entire length of the roadway there will improve transmission and fire flows in the area. This is specifically important because we have a new well that we're going to be bringing forward for outfitting to you in the next couple meetings, that is up north of this area, so this will allow us to be able to move that water down through this system by having this new connectivity.
So, it'll be looped?
Yes, and we'll have dual lines to be able to get the higher flows down through there from multiple wells in the area. So, ultimately, once the design was completed on this project, we solicited for invitation for bids during February. We received four bids from contractors as interested in the project. Bids were reviewed, deemed responsive and balanced, and ultimately, I'm here today to recommend award to the low bidder in the amount of $3,087,738 with Fan Contracting. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, Craig. You know, this is much anticipated out there. I know we've been talking about doing this Corsair Extension for quite some time, and you're right, it's really going to help the industrial complex around the airport. EPS is out there, and there's some other substantial operators out there, but there's a lot of small business and different folks doing business out in that industrial complex, and it's really going to help the connectivity. You already answered my question about Wilkinson, which is troublesome, but I knew that you guys were waiting until Corsair was connected there to get that fixed back up, and so that'll be really nice in terms of safety to get Wilkinson fixed up. A lot of activity in this area. I've driven out there recently, and between what you're doing under the highway there with the trunk main, as well as then moving north throughout this Corsair area, there's a lot of dirt work and a lot of things happening, so it's cool to see, and it's really going to be beneficial economically for those folks out at the industrial complex, so. Questions, comments from the council?
Councilman Good?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that if I slice my drive off of the Par 3 sixth hole, it's not going to impact the vehicles coming around that connector.
Unfortunately, the project is going to remove a couple of those elm trees that are right there close to the new roundabout, so we will lose some of those.
I've never been a real fan of those elm trees, even though I've been in contact with them many times.
We are...
Well, thank you for that.
We are going to have a chain-link fence in that area around that. It will not be as high as the driving range, but there will be a chain-link fence to keep balls from just rolling out there into the street.
Very good.
Mayor, one thing that I, I know it's in the memo here, but I should have pointed it out specifically, so we have the, with the financing of this project, we also received an Economic Strength Program grant through ADOT, that was $500,000, so that is part of the funding that's covering this project.
Yep, no, that's right. I remember receiving that grant, and it's very good to mention here, Craig, that that's helping with this project, so, thank you for that. Anybody else on the council? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2020-165.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Craig. Let's move on to Item I, please.
Now, there needs to be another motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2019-118A3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve night work.
Second.
Motion and a second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, thank you for that. Now, we'll move on to Item I, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2020-172 with capital improvements for the Cliffrose Subdivision Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $817,885.
Hey, hello again. Next up, we have, the item is to award construction contract with capital improvements, LLC, for the replacement of water main within the Cliffrose subdivision. Specific items associated with this expresses that the existing PVC water main is being replaced with ductal iron. So, some background is Utilities records and evaluates water main failures, and this mainline project then was developed in response to an increased number of failures on the existing system. So, the existing system is only 34 years old, less than half of the timeframe that the system should serve the community. The existing eight-inch PVC water main in the area is prematurely failing and at the end of its service life. Again, with this, upon identification, need for this replacement, we initiated design. Once design was complete, the project's been advertised during February. We opened bids in March and received qualified bids from three contractors for the project. The bids have been confirmed, capital improvements, LLC, verification of license, bonding, references, and past performance was checked. The bid has been deemed responsive and balanced. Funding is available within the water fund. With that, recommend approval of the contract for $817,885 is recommended. Happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Craig. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, I would just like to say that finally, we're replacing that water main. I've been in contact with the residents on Marvin Gardens, and apparently, it has broken eight, at least eight times before it was deemed to need to be repaired, and I was just wondering if in the future, do we have a protocol as to how many times a water main has to break before we decide to replace it?
It, there are many pieces that come into that review, I believe, in regards to that number of incidents, that's throughout the whole entire area of the project, and with that, yes, we find that there may be a rash right in one spot, and I think that's over a number of years that has been spread out. So, definitely, what has helped trigger this just recently, in the last two, two-and-a-half years, is a number of breaks then that were going all the way down through the longer neighborhood. Uh... Some of those breaks have been expressed, we're in a cluster right in one area over here on Boardwalk. So yes, through our maintenance management program, every work order that's identified, any type of work that's done is tracked and then followed for that. Plus, we always have to balance total system needs to be able to identify and program when we are able to do projects.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're replacing it with ductile iron, because I believe from our previous conversations, ductile iron has a 90-year lifespan, and it will save the taxpayers a lot of money. And are we requiring ductile iron in the new subdivisions that are going in?
Yeah, by our current general engineering standards, PVC is still an option to be used through alterations and modification process. It, so anytime there is an alteration, modification submitted for consideration, then our staff looks at where are we? What is the, what is the surrounding area like? What is the geology in the area? When we are in rocky areas like Cliffrose, if we got one of those requests today, no, we're denying those. When we are in areas where there are better soils, not the extents of rock like there is in the Cliffrose area, then currently PVC is being accepted. However, as the year goes on, we're going to be bringing general engineering standard revisions forward to be considered. So that is something that can be discussed with those documents.
And also, is it important, the material used to backfill the trenches around our piping?
That is paramount importance, that pipe is being installed correctly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions, comments from the council? Not will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2020-172.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Let's vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right. That's the last agenda item. Our quote's coming from George W. Bush today. Leadership, to me, means duty, honor, country. It means character, and it means listening from time to time. This meeting is adjourned.